Very good. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the people in the audience. A little call taken, everyone here. Let's begin with a moment of reflection and respect. And I'm reminded of, there was a time in this fair land when the railroad did not run. Have a moment of reflection and respect. Thank you.
That council confirms the agenda for the meeting of May 3, 2023, with the addition of an attachment respecting item 8.1, being a letter from Mike Hutchison.
We're in a seconder, but Consular Ozley, second of the Consul Ben Reyes. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Remind people about a declaration of pecuniary interest, if you have one. We begin 5.1 with delegations. Begin with the delegation from the Hospice of Elgin representatives Melanie Ross, Paul Bodie, and Dr. John Hoffus, delegating regarding the hospice of Elgin. Welcome, people. And if you move to the podium, please.
Good evening. Maybe just to add to the introductions as well. My name is Laura Sherwood. I'm the Director of Hospice Partnerships with Hospice of Elgin. So, thank you, Mayor Cookett and Council for your time this evening and the opportunity for us to share a little bit about a project that is very near and dear to our parents, but frankly will touch everyone in this room at some point in their lives. So, we are going to talk not about death and dying. We're going to talk about living and how important this project is going to be to support us at a very vulnerable time in our lives. And I just need to figure out how to, oh, there we go. So, we have a few slides here to share just an overview of the project. So, our goal this evening would be to share a little bit about what is a hospice, a little bit more specifically about how is our hospice in Elgin County going to be unique and serve the people of our community, and also hoping to provide a bit of a project update so you know when this is going to be built and when the doors are going to open. And so, this photo is Dr. Bob Jones. He is our campaign chair, working with our volunteer leaders that are here with me tonight, to highlight and spread the word about the need for a hospice. So, Elgin County is the only region in southwestern Ontario without a hospice. So, we not only have a significant gap in our community, but we also don't have any dedicated palliative care beds in our hospital. So, where do you go when you need support at end of life? And we know that our community has an aging demographic. So, the need is not only existing today, but we know that that need is growing as well. I think I'm going in the wrong direction here. There we go. So, what is hospice? We talk about hospice as more than just a building in a place. It's also a type of care. It is a care to support individuals on that end-of-life journey, but it is also a really important space to wrap around the care for loved ones and family members on that journey. Often, people think hospice is a place where you go, but I'm excited to share today that it is a hub of care and a place where you can come, but you can also go back home. So, how does that all work? So, I'm going to get into a little bit about what is that hospice that we are hoping to build here in Elgin County. Some of the pieces that you would have saw on the slides is that there's no cost. So, often people ask us, you know, how do I get into hospice? How much does it cost? I likely can't afford it. There is no cost to come to hospice. And so, as we've been talking a little bit about why, what is the need in our community with the growing aging demographic, we've also engaged the community to tell us what might a really wonderful place look like at end-of-life care. And as we, you're starting to see here, it is more than just a building. It is a place that starts to feel and look like home. Not necessarily our homes, but it's going to be an extension of a space that is welcoming. Everything from connections and having TV for us to connect to family members that may not be still in the community. It is about creating space for gatherings, whether that's fire pits for families to have those marshmallow roasts and final wonderful moments at end of life. Our pets, our fur babies, how do we make sure that the definition of family may extend beyond just our immediate family? And so, hospice essentially is about creating a building that is filled with life. And so, that's everything from the care that happens at hospice. So, having a palliative care clinic means that people come in, get that expert pain and symptom management, and can go back home. It means that when they're on that journey and it gets tough and they cannot stay, they can come to hospice for a short stay through our respite beds and then go back home. And then, when that journey at home cannot be sustained, that additional care is needed, or the individual doesn't have family or a spouse or a caregiver, they can come to hospice and receive 24/7 expert care in an environment that is tucked in the woods and that is beautiful and home-like. And I'm going to show you some images of what we hope hospice will look like. Hospice is not just about physical pain and symptom management. It is about creating a space for life, and that means treating us as human beings. Our psychosocial, spiritual, our beliefs, our traditions, our quirky pieces that our families like to celebrate, all of that becomes part of the hospice experience. And then, of course, supporting the families. Often, loved ones say, you know, their grief is seeing their loved ones suffer, saying goodbye to their loved ones, making sure their loved ones are going to be okay when they're gone. And so, that grief and bereavement programs will also be available. And it's possible that someone might not come to hospice at all, but their family members, through the loss in the community, might come and access support and services at hospice, again, at no cost. Hospice will care for all generations. It is not an age demographic that we support. Often, our facility in 10 beds suites will have, be caring for individuals that are under the age of 45. So, individuals that find themselves on that palliative care journey is not only for those that are of certain age. And so, you can see the variety of services that will be offered, including space for families to come and be on site. So, it's possible that if your loved one is at hospice, you too can come and stay with your loved one and be there for all of those final moments. So, hospice has a bold vision of building a 17,000-square-foot facility. It will be tucked in the woods. It will have a cottage-like welcoming design. It is not a hospital. It is not a clinical institutional setting. It is there to provide space for more life at end of life. So, while it'll be tucked in a St. Thomas at 8 South Edgeware Road, and for those who are not familiar with that, that location is a wooded space that will be overlooking Waterworks Park and will also be adjacent to two elementary schools. So, those individuals that are coming to hospice, they don't want to feel like they're at end of life. They're still living. And so, having the faint sounds of children playing, people enjoying the park, really help individuals continue to live even at those final moments. And just before, as we talked about, while the heart of hospice will be anchored, that care will be anchored in St. Thomas, the majority of care will actually be pushed out into the community. And so, I'll talk a little bit about that, but I wanted to share some of the design elements to help you give a sense of what will the hospice look like. And so, the community told us that they wanted it to have anchoring to natural materials. So, this is an example of Exeter's Jessica's House, one of the smallest hospices in our region. And you can see that between the stone, fireplaces, the wood-timber structures, those are our materials and design elements that really resonate with our community. We don't want it to be a super fancy environment. We want it to be welcoming. And so, that's what you'll see in a lot of the design choices that you'll see in Hospice of Elgin. And so, some of the design inspiration that the community told us was important is the top right space is actually Edmonton's Hospice, and they want it to be a space of comfort for families and kids to climb on the sofa, to curl up and watch a movie, eat popcorn, let it drop on the ground, and feel comfortable for all of those special moments right until that very end. You'll see that there's a little bar where, you know, families can grab, you know, refreshments. They don't have to leave to get snacks and food to make sure that they're well cared for when they're in that environment. But you'll also see in the other two images, a significant connection to that natural environment. In honor of our rural communities, we want to make sure that you can feel that beautiful wraparound treat environment. So, exposure to those natural elements is part of healing, even when we know individuals won't get well. And of course, home-like furnishings, even in those private suites. So, one of the things in our designs, in addition to that room, will be having a separate section that's kind of behind the fireplace that will be a sitting space for families to also watch TV, that has a private patio that connects right out into the green space. So, every suite will have a private space. They can wheel the bed right out into the beauty of the sunshine, listen to the birds, have breakfast. And so, this is really calling for our community to have a better ending. And so, we believe that these design inspirations will help create such a wonderful space for our community should they need to come to hospice. But of course, it's not a place where we want people to come unless they absolutely have to. And so, our team has been busy on the design. This draft rendering, if you will, and there's still significant edits taking place, but it's really to illustrate that the brown section, the L, if you will, is the 10 private hospice suites, and that's where 24/7 care will happen, family sleep space. There will be a family spa and washroom so that family members have everything they need to be there and stay as long as they need to, to support their loved ones. The green section is the life of hospice. When you come in, you will see that natural environment. You will have the kitchen and the family dining room and the spaces so that you can just be together as a family. And the pink section, which is probably the most important section, which will care for 400 individuals each and every year in our community, but keeping them in their home. This space is about providing access to care and support without having people come to hospice. And of course, then we have our small but mighty team of 30-plus staff that will be on site, providing everything from expert medical palliative care, but also providing support through our clinic, our psychosocial support through counselors, our 200-plus volunteers, which make this an extremely cost-effective and community-anchored type of care. So, what's happening in our project? While we've been busy behind the scenes doing a few things, fundraising, of course, is an important part. We have to raise $13 million to get this facility open, and I can say we are well on our way. The community has been rallying to be able to support such a project, an anchoring piece to support the growth of our community, but also the health and well-being of our community as well. And we are also working on that site preparation. So, the site, the trees have started to come out. We are getting ready for construction, and we are anticipating by the end of the summer, shovels will be going in the ground. The building process will take 12 to 14 months, so you will see this happen fairly quickly. That means doors will be open, care will begin in September of 2024. New jobs, recruitment will be happening about six months before those doors open, and of course, we are going to celebrate with the community. This is going to be a facility for everyone in Elgin County. And when we find ourselves, or a neighbor, or a colleague facing that end-of-life journey, we hope they have complete confidence, don't need to know how to navigate that end-of-life journey, but they know to call hospice to figure out how we can support them on that journey, whether it's in hospice or keeping them in the place that they often choose to be, which is home with family. And like I said, doors open September 24. And in addition to these incredible community leaders that I have with me today, we have hundreds of people working on this project. You likely don't realize that because we are working behind the scenes, having conversations. Hospice isn't something where we're taking out an ad and having a quick conversation, but it really is lots of conversations to help raise the funds, raise the awareness, to be able to build such a special place. And so, we are very proud to display some of the incredible, you know, human beings in the heart of our project with you today, but there's many more behind the scenes. So, maybe I'll stop there, and I'm not sure if there's any questions for our teams or anything that you'd like to share that's important on the project.
All right. Thank you very much, Melanie. Questions? Consular Chapman?
Your worship, I just have two questions. One of the ones is, is this facility for Elgin County only, or is it open to other areas as well? And the second one is, how do you get accepted? So, if there's only 10 beds, more than 10 people at a time will be in that position. So, how do you choose who gets accepted to be in the facility?
Good question. And so, a couple of things that, maybe I'll start with the second question. The average length of stay in a hospice is 21 days. So, that those private suites, we will care for about 125 individuals through, that will come and spend their final moments at hospice. So, the question around, is 10 beds enough? It really is, because you're coming into hospice to access care for a short period of your journey.
It is not something where you're
Coming to hospice for months. And so, it's very different than some of our, it's just, it's a different type of care that's really concentrated to support with that final three weeks or end-of-life piece. And then, the question around, how do you get into hospice? There is essentially no wrong door. So, individuals can come in and access care through their family physician by calling hospice directly. And then, the question around, can others access our hospice in our community? And so, what I would say to that is, Hospice of Elgin has a significant need. And so, when we do assessments around who comes, it's really around the greatest need and supporting the community. However, if an individual has left our community, but their family is here, then there may be an opportunity, if there's space for that individual, to come in and access care and be surrounded by their family. No different than right now, other communities and other hospices are caring for residents from Elgin. So, the goal is to serve those that are in Elgin County first and foremost, but should there be space and availability and/or a unique need where somebody's care needs to happen in our community, then we would support that. No different if somebody in our community left, we would hope that they were welcome to come back and access care and vice versa, that if somebody wanted to access care at another hospice, which they're doing today, that they are greeted with those open arms.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Consular Ozley.
Good presentation, wonderful project. I look forward to being there.
Well, I would like to say I don't look forward to seeing you, but I think it's going to be such an awesome place that maybe Elgin County will be the best place to die because we have such wonderful care and a great place. And if anything you take away from this project, hospice isn't about death. It is a wonderful reminder about how precious life is and that we should all be inspired to go out and live more, have the right conversations with our loved ones, focus on what matters most, and then trust that when we need that care, whether it's in our home or hospice, there's going to be an awesome place to go.
Wonderful locality, and it's a wonderful project.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, worship. My dad, or sorry, my mother passed in a hospital. My father passed in a hospice. What a difference. Anyway, my question. Ongoing operating expenses after your, who handles that?
Oh, good question. So, the hospices are funded by split. 50% of operational dollars are funded by the province, and 50% come from ongoing fundraising that happens within hospice. That is, our experience with operating hospices has been that, you know, when somebody comes through hospice, it's such a special journey, that often families that receive that care pay that forward to other families through a donation, either through their donation or memorial gifts, and encourage others that want to honor their loved one to make a gift in support of hospice. And then, naturally, like most organizations, will have a couple of really special, you know, events throughout the year to be, to raise additional funds, to be able to not just raise the money, but hospice is really about bringing the community together. And some of the design that you will see for hospice, yes, we've built care spaces, but we've also built in some space that we want to encourage the community to come and be a part of the facility outside of needing care. So, I don't know if it's yoga nights on Tuesday nights, or, you know, the girl guides are coming in to host their meetings, but we really want to build a collaborative space where all are welcomed. And again, it's not just focused on those end-of-life pieces. So, part of that will be opportunities for the community to see the impact and be able to contribute in your own ways to help pay that forward to other families as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Consular Ben Reyes.
Mr. Mayor, first again, I'd like to thank you for the presentation. It was amazing. One question I have, and hopefully you've had enough support and can kind of gauge this, but it says you, it says about 200 volunteers will support hospice each year. Have you had enough feedback or been able to look into it enough to, do you anticipate being able to have 200 volunteers?
Yes. And so, I can say that we have a list of people that want to be a part of hospice already, and you're not hearing a lot about us. So, in addition to our incredible team of individuals that we have, and I would say we're close to about 60 people that are volunteering in different capacities to help advance the project, I don't anticipate that. And the reason being is that many hospices find that this is a way to have a meaningful volunteer experience. And so, part of the volunteer role in hospice, we talk about it even as staff, that is such a privilege to be able to part, be a part of such an organization that journeys with somebody at end of life. And so, many of our volunteers have that experience. So, when, whether they're at the front desk greeting people and families and helping them navigate, whether it's the volunteers that are in our kitchen baking cookies and soup that feed families and feed the residents, to maintenance, or our garden volunteers, it allows individuals to contribute their own passions in a meaningful way. And so, often we say that no one's going to regret giving a little bit of time or money to this project. They're just not. It is one of those projects you feel really good about paying it forward. And so, most hospices really are, their operations are built on hundreds of volunteers of giving their time generously.
Great. Thank you.
Do you have another question? Consular Ozley?
Yes, yes, your worship. Will they, will they be doctors and nurses present?
Yes. So, our staff, there will be a medical director, there will be nurses, PSWs, counselors, spiritual care. Often, spiritual care also connects with other faith leaders. So, do you have your own spiritual leader? We want them to come be a part of the care team. Obviously, volunteers as well, and then our administrative kitchen staff and our housekeeping staff as well. So, it's a small but mighty team.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for that presentation, Laura. And we have a resolution?
That delegation from the Hospice of Elgin, Representatives Laura Sherwood, Melanie
Representatives Laura Sherwood, Melanie Ross, Paul Bodie, Dr. John Hoffus, delegating regarding the hospice of Elgin be received for information.
Move her in a second, or move back to Counselor Distrozier, second by Counselor Andres. All those in favor, just carry it. Thank you. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Move on to five point two, which is the delegation from Nancy Gunther regarding starting a community garden. Nancy, the, thank you. Welcome, Nancy.
Thank you. First off, I would like to say thank you for the opportunity to come here. And we are seeking support for this project. So yeah, thank you. I just have a question. Okay, thank you. So my name is Nancy Gunther and I recently moved here from to Elmer and I transferred to East Elgin School. And at the beginning of the semester, my teacher, Ms. Meadows and I, we were brainstorming ideas on how we could improve this community. And so we came up with the idea of bringing a community garden into Elmer. So I. Okay. So some of the top reasons that communities have chosen to grow community gardens are things such as addressing physical and mental stress. So gardening has been proven to increase mental health. And as we're coming out of the two thousand and twenty pandemic, I believe that this is one of the best ways to encourage people from this community to come outside of their homes and say hello and to meet new people. For introverts and extroverts alike, community is important. It also helps build community for, as a community bond for a more inclusive community. And many young children have minimal to no experience involving plants and gardens in their young years. As summer draws closer, I believe this is one of the very best ways to encourage people of all ages to come off of the couches and to plant some seeds, pick what they have grown and to breathe in some fresh air. Planting your own vegetables encourages you to eat healthier and to incorporate more of those vegetables and fruits into your daily meals. Many of the transportation vehicles for the fruits and vegetables in our local stores come from big trucks that burn a lot of fuel. They're envi, they're not environmentally friendly and the produce is normally local either. So involving children by encouraging them to help pick the vegetables and showing them what the different plants look like can help them grow their knowledge on all these plants and also possibly encourage them to pursue a career in that field later on in their years. And it also helps to save money on food. Growing your own vegetables isn't just rewarding, but it would help decrease the grocery bills during the summer months as food and gas prices are continually increasing. So it also helps preserve tradition and culture. As a large percentage of Elmer's population are Mennonites, many of them are living in more urban areas than they have in the past few decades. And that takes away part of the opportunity to exercise that love of gardening and growing their own food. Some of the other benefits for a community garden include encouraging people to come outdoors, plants restore oxygen to the air, and we all know that homegrown food just tastes better, honestly. Whether that's because they're planted and cared for with love or because they aren't greenhouse grown, I'm not sure. So as we are growing these gardens, we can help each other out with different knowledge that we have about these plants from past experience and also different ways to handle different plants. So this is also an amazing way for students from East Elgin or different schools for volunteer hours and to get those forty hours in. And gardening also provides a sense of productivity. And even just spending ten to twenty minutes a day can be greatly beneficial to you. So according to a research done at Permaculture College in Australia on why gardening makes you happy and cures depression. So this is beginning of quote, getting your hands dirty in the garden can increase your serotonin levels. Contact with the soil triggers the release of serotonin in our brain. According to the research, serotonin is a happy chemical, a natural antidepressant, and strengthens the immune system, end quote. So this is just a short video of what the hormone serotonin looks like. And so basically you're looking at happiness right now. Does it work to go to the next slide from over there? Okay. So these are some of the guidelines that St. Thomas Garden had, well, the St. Thomas Community Garden had for their group. And these are also some guidelines that I found were pretty thorough with all their information and also possibly ones that we could incorporate for ourselves in our community for some success. So they had rules such as respecting each other's privacy, being kind and courteous, no hate speech or bullying, and then also for their Facebook chat group about the fruits and vegetables that they were planting, no spam, only information. So this was what the Nourish Project from Peterborough said about their community gardens. Peterborough's community garden movement is thriving. Did you know that we are currently, we currently have forty-three community gardens across Peterborough County and city? This is the highest number of community gardens per capita in the country. Many of them are located in public property and you can check out our map if you would like to make plans to visit a few of them. So I did look at the Google, their gardens through Google Maps and they look great. The gardens look like they were thoroughly thought out and they are well spaced. Their raised beds look like they put some effort and some thought into what they were creating. So if we say that we start off with sixteen plots, we could charge about fifteen dollars per plot as a yearly rate, and that's two hundred and forty dollars per year. Plus, the community would be more connected as they come out of their homes and get to meet new people. So that poses a question, what would be done with the money? So of course, a portion of the money would go back to the garden for supplies such as shovels or fertilizer, et cetera. But immediately I thought of the Family Central that is also located right here in Elmer. Having been blessed by them in the past, I believe that we would be able to provide and possibly, we would possibly be able to provide them and other nonprofit places in this community with a good percentage of the money that we would earn every year from this garden. So some of the locations that we came up with, we did some brainstorming. But the first one would be Crystal Park. Now, this is just off of Fath Ave and there's a beautiful, large space that we could plant this garden at. But it is really close to a baseball diamond. And also if you look at the yards in this area, the backyards are quite big. And if they wanted to, they have the space to create their own gardens at home. And there are other places in Elmer that I believe could benefit a bit more from the community gardens. So this is another one that came up and there's two possible locations for this. But again, this one is really close to a baseball diamond. And even though this is a nice location in general, just looking at the yard sizes from the areas around, they don't have large backyards and they would be within walking distance of their community gardens. It is really close to the baseball diamond. And if there was all of a sudden kids' games, it's more than likely that some of the baseballs might get lost in the in the plants. So in Kinson Park, there's a great spot. There's actually two. I'll show the next one in a moment. But there's, this one is a great spot right across from the kids' playground for the parents to be working in the gardens. Or if they want to involve the children, the children can just come by as well and spend a few minutes in the garden, helping picking up some of the vegetables or weeding the gardens. And so the next section was just further back in Kinsman, Kinson Park. And this location has trees surrounding it a little bit, which doesn't prevent too much sunshine from shining onto the garden. And it is far enough from the baseball diamond that it wouldn't interfere with the people planting. So these are some of the ideas that we came up with of how we could possibly build our raised beds. And we are in the middle of creating one right now at school as a project for my carpentry class. But this is just an idea. We could make them larger. We could make them higher. So a raised bed would help if there is people. So there was a statistic done from gardening, the gardening industry in Canada. And it was done in two thousand and twenty-one. And it said that sixty-eight percent of home gardeners are fifty-five and older. So raised beds would help prevent knee and back aches and it would also make it the vegetables easier to reach and help pick the vegetables much easier. So then this is a drawing that I did, just an idea of how we could do the gardens. And they would be wide enough apart so that we wouldn't have to worry about the weeds and the grass growing too tall. So we would make sure that whoever is mowing the lawns in these areas would be able to have space to go in between. And this is very flexible. The raised beds could be larger. We could split them in half. Whatever would work there. So this is just another image that I drew. So one of the ideas was to have them four feet by two and a half feet and then have them three feet wide, which I think could be a great height for anyone to get involved with. So some of the main vegetables that were grown in community gardens include tomatoes and peppers, as well as different types of greens and squash and then onions as well. And there was also cucumbers. So when would we start this project? Preferably as soon as possible. Growing season starts pretty much right now. And so we could start with buying some starter plants this year and then possibly in the future, we could start with seedlings or whatever the next year would bring. And so we're ready for a closer growing community and wondering what we could do to keep on moving forward with this project. And also if there are any questions, I'm open for that.
Well, thank you very much, Nancy. That was a great presentation, wonderful. Some great ideas about cooperation between the school and the town and all kinds of other ideas. I should mention that both you and Tina are the first students that have ever presented to Town Hall. So congratulations on that. So thank you. Counselor questions? Counselor Andres?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank you for that wonderful presentation. It's amazing that you took the time to put all that together, come up with this idea. I think it's, it's an amazing idea that could potentially bring the community closer together and provide basically all the benefits that you spoke about. One question I had, I don't know as much about community gardens as you've researched. Who would be funding, like who, who builds these gardens? Where's the funding come from for startup costs?
So one of the ideas that we did come up with was that there could be high schoolers that are in carpentry class that could potentially build these. And another one was that they could be a part of a volunteer project. Or if the family is able to, they could possibly build their own or construct their own community garden bed.
Thank you. And I loved this, the fact that you're looking at raised garden beds. If there were raised garden beds that were wheelchair accessible, I think would be amazing as well because there's a lot of people with mobility issues that a wheelchair fit right underneath and they could re-lean over and have access. So it's a lot easier. So you know what? Amazing. Thank you very much. I definitely support this.
Counselor Distrozier?
Thank you, your worship. First of all, Nancy, thank you very much. I know it takes a lot of confidence to come up here and speak to us. So you did really good. Thank you very much. Two concerns I have is three of the four locations that you've presented are actually within Catfish Creek flood plains. So my concern is, I'm sure we all know when, you know, when we have the flooding in the spring, there can be a lot of debris that comes through there, you know, aggressive water pressure and, you know, a lot of water. So what's the plan as far as maintaining the garden spaces when those grounds flood? Because they are within flooding, like it will flood. The other question is that, yes, a lot of community gardens, I've seen, you know, they do really good work and they look really nice, but there are some in communities that are not maintained. And at that point, when they're not maintained, who is responsible for keeping them maintained?
If they would not be maintained, I think the people that did place the beds should be responsible for taking them away. So if I put one in there, I would take, I would hold myself accountable and take responsibility for removing that if I, if all of a sudden the whole garden just kind of collapses. Or even if someone else is willing to take over in a couple of years or whatever, I think that would be a great idea as well. But definitely we would look into that and then make sure that it doesn't just start collecting dust. And for the flooding, I am new to this area, so I hadn't even been aware of that, but thanks for that. And so which one of the areas would not be a bunch of flooding?
Everything, I think, except the one-off Fath. Perhaps our Parks Director might be able to address that more. But as far as like Steen Park, I've seen those areas flood along the Disc Golf. Kingsman, a hundred and ten percent. Same with the other Kingsman near the baseball diamond. So really the only one that potentially might not have flooding is the.
Well, we could definitely look into other locations or even possibly do one here. I'm open to help with this project. No, it's totally fine.
Yeah, thank you for those questions. Counselor Loeslach has a question. I just do have a suggestion that a lot of these rules and regulations and finer points of what we do, we've got a perfect committee to turn those questions over to. I think the Parks and Recreation Committee could kind of handle the the areas that would look at this kind of thing. Counselor Loeslach?
Yes. Wonderful presentation. I was involved in the community gardens in Elmer in two thousand and ten to two thousand and fourteen. And on the first year, we had twenty-five plots. It was on the corner of Rogers Road and Highway Three at the church in Malahide Township. It was a community gardens for Elmer and Malahide. And it lasted for probably four years. It fizzled out eventually. And the Hort Society was instrumental. Private citizens were instrumental and I was instrumental as chair of the Urban Management Committee at the time. And I look forward to, I've toured the St. Thomas Community Gardens and they're wonderful. They're all fenced, water is provided and the plots are well maintained. And I think is a wonderful idea for Elmer. But like, like the Mayor Crockett said, we're going to refer to the, the Elmer Beautification and Parks Committee.
Great. Thank you very much for those reminiscences, Counselor.
I'm, I'm a great gardener. I provide a lot of plants for the gardens.
Counselor, Counselor Rahi, sorry.
Fantastic presentation. If you tutor public speaking, I could use a little bit of help on the side, maybe. There is potentially a community garden, like Community Living Garden going in on the backside of the. What's that?
The Old Canadian Tire.
The Old Canadian Tire, which might be a good spot to maybe work with them with on that project. But good presentation, good idea. I like it.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, Nancy. Great job. Was, we have a resolution?
That the delegation from Nancy Gunther regarding the starting of a community garden be received for information.
Move her in second, or Counselor Loeslach, Counselor Rahi, all those in favor? Carry. Thank you. Five point three, a delegation from Tina Harder regarding the East Elgin Secondary School parking issues. Tina, welcome.
Good evening, council members. This is definitely not something that I was looking forward to. But my name is Tina Harder and I am standing here representing each of the present students at East Elgin, future students at East Elgin, and also the past, not only the students, but staff and teachers as well. So as you may have noticed, our school does not have a parking lot. And this, as I've mentioned, students, teachers, staff, visitors, and residents of Rutherford and St. Andrews are all affected by this issue. issue. Um, so students, well, there's quite a few of them, um, teachers, I'm going to get into the statistics in a minute, but, uh, residents of Rutherford and St. Andrews, and then visitors, um, they both kind of go together. So let's say if one of the residents that lives on St. Andrews or Rutherford wants to have visitors during the day, but their school going, uh, where are their visitors going to park? Because the students have taken up every last parking spot in the area. So problems that are caused by this issue are students come to class late because they'll circle the school building, hoping that there will be some miracle of a parking lot, um, empty space. Uh, I usually circle the lot around two times before I finally decide to take a side street or end up parking at the Domino's and, and the, the thrift store on that parking lot, and then walk to school, and that, well, then I'll be late. Um, students come up to forty-five minutes early just to get a parking space. Um, I think that's kind of crazy, because I live outside of town, so I'd have to get up at around six in the morning, if not earlier, to get here in time to get a parking spot, forty-five minutes before school starts. Football games are really crowded, um, and people walk quite a distance to the school. They have to park quite a ways. I'm not sure if any of you remember, seven years ago, Curtis Wiebe was hit by a vehicle. Um, and I feel like that could have been avoided if there would have been a proper parking situation there. Uh, I know that this issue causes anger towards others in between students. Um, in the mornings, we hear quite a bit of honking, actually. You'd be quite surprised. Um, it's just when you see that one last parking spot, and you're like, oh, I'm on my way. Like, I got it. And someone else pulls in, and it's just like, oh, come on.
Update the presentation, because we want to add more stuff. Sorry. My, my teacher in me wanted her to update a couple of things with percentages. So, um, I guess, but, um, so Mr. Cookett used to be our principal at East Elgin. And, uh, and, uh, and just, are we allowed to ask questions? How did you feel about the parking spots for staff?
Parking issue at East Elgin is like a parking issue in the town. It never goes away. Issue, uh, a few years ago when I was there, and it still, it still is.
Doing great.
Did you have another question for me, Tina?
Uh, yes, I did. I tried finding what year you were the principal at East Elgin, but I was not able to find that. Um, I know you were principal at possibly two different places, and it might not have been in nineteen seventies.
It's all hidden in the archives.
Unfortunately, I don't have access to those.
The, the, the last year I was principal was, uh, nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and four. Don't you look, you can look that up, but park, I used to park in that top spot right there.
All right. So now that we have the correct presentation, I was a little confused. I was like, it's taking a while to get there. But here are the statistics of our parking, like how many parking spaces and how many staff and students. We got a hundred and seven staff, so those teachers, but we only have sixty-two spaces, parking spaces, on our teacher lots, like the one on the west end and the east end. So some of these teachers do not have a designated parking space on the lot, and then they go park on the road before the students get there. So we have about six hundred and seventy-five grade elevens and twelves. Now, these do not all drive, but they are potential drivers. And on the roads, uh, from what I counted, we only had thirty-four parking spaces, which would be on Rutherford, St. Andrews, and South Street. And there's no parking left after we're there for the visitors. So I fully support taking the bus to school. It reduces the traffic, uh, in town at, like when we get to school and when we leave, just leave, reduces pollution, and it keeps students punctual. Um, and it's just safer, I believe. Um, but there are some students that are not able to take the bus, and so why are students driving to school? So I made a Google form, and we posted it on our Instagram page, and we had about a hundred students take part in this. So this isn't, but this is like, gives you kind of an idea. So we got forty-two percent, forty-two point five percent students that drive to school because they either have work before school, um, they have a co-op that they get, need to get to, or they need to get to work right after school. So they're not able to take the bus to get home, because bus rides can be up to forty-five minutes long. Um, and then there's six point nine percent that unfortunately don't feel comfortable taking the bus. We got twenty-nine point nine percent of the students that have extracurricular activities after school. Uh, and then there's twelve percent, twelve point six percent that don't have a bus provided from where they live. And then there's eight point one percent that have other reasons. And we already went over that. So now this might be a small parking issue, but it just adds more stress to our, to us students already. Sixty-two percent have high levels of stress with extreme, with extreme fatigue and feeling out of control. Uh, this will obviously affect their, uh, their performance at school. Thirty-three percent have constant but manageable stress levels, and five percent have low stress levels. The impact of stress on productivity, so about forty-two percent lose about fifteen to thirty minutes per day in productivity due to stress. And then there's thirty-four percent that lose one hour or more per day in productivity, and we have twenty-four that aren't affected by this. But I think those are still pretty high numbers. So stress can also impact on attendance, and I know this for myself, that it's really hard not to take a mental health day, like, pretty often. Um, but fifty-four percent of this percent miss one-to-do days per, per year. And then there's thirty-one percent that only miss three to, that miss three to six, and then fifteen percent that miss more than six days per year. So I decided to throw in something funny. Um, and I was like, no, but Ms. Meadows encouraged me to do this. Anyway, so this is before the parking situation and then after. So let's turn our stress into success. And how are we going to, going to do that? Now, we brainstormed some ridiculous ideas, but I thought it'd be nice to just throw them in. So we can remove our football field and just turn it into a parking lot. But I didn't want to get into, like, I didn't want to get into a fight with all those football players or the coaches and everyone else in the school. So we decided that was an unrealistic idea. Another one was a parking garage. It would cost way too much. And, well, it's a small town of Elmer. Do we need a parking garage? And then there's building, building a new school out in the country or rural area. It wouldn't really be convenient for students that live in Elmer, so that since there's so many of our students that come from in the town of Elmer. And it might also affect the businesses, like restaurants in the town of Elmer. Like, I don't know if you guys noticed, but from, what is it, eleven forty to twelve twenty, restaurants are very, very full. And, well, that's because the students go there for lunch. And we have another one. Fly a helicopter to school. We have lots of parking on the rooftops of the school, but I don't know how we're going to afford our helicopters and how we're going to get there. Um, so now I thought of more reasonable ways that could, they're just smaller changes that we could do, um, by adding more angled parking or creating one-way streets and moving the bus loading zone. So we'd move our bus loading zone from, they'd come from Talbot Street to St. Andrews, and then they'd go between the football field and the school where it originally was, and then they would go through Rutherford to, back to Talbot. And so that would give us more, like, the highlighted areas. We could add more parking there. Um, and then also, if we needed to widen the street, um, I noticed that there was about the same amount of room between, which is eight feet, between the fence and the track. So we could move our fence over to right to the track, and then move the sidewalk to where the grass would be, that empty space between the grass and the fence, sorry, the track and the fence. And that would widen the street for more angled parking. And that is what we've come up to solve this problem. Um, and we are looking forward to more ideas. Like, I have, I have no idea how hard this would be. Uh, this isn't my, I feel like it's a lot harder than I think, but I think it's possible. Um, so if I'm open to any ideas or opinions.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Tina. That was difficult to do, uh, but, uh, but thank you for that presentation. There's a lot of, uh, a lot of issues here. I understand you've been talking to staff already in terms of parking, so that's great. And, um, questions from council? Counselor, just Rosie.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Tina, for presenting. Um, have you consulted with the bus company regarding your proposal of looping them around through the alley?
No, I have not, but they have had the bus going through before. Uh, there's still a sign up that says bus loading zone, so I, yeah, I wouldn't understand why they wouldn't be able to.
My only concern, just from, uh, speaking actually to a school bus driver, um, would be if this would be doable due to the blind spots, um, like a bus coming through here, having the school, and then this portable here as well. Um, so it might be a safety concern, but again, it'd be something you'd have to consult with them about. So that was my question. Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, Counselor Chapman.
Through you, your worship. It's, it's kind of a general question. Is the responsibility of the parking school board's problem? Because it's the school board's facility, or is it the town's problem? Um, or is it something that should be worked on together? Because I know that quite often we blame the town, but reality is, the school board is not providing the staff with the parking. So, um, have you spoke to town's alley?
Uh, no, I haven't had the opportunity to.
Because ideally, they should buy a property to give you the parking that you require. That would be the ideal situation, was that?
They have sold the property that was around, um, the area. And, uh, talking to, uh, Ms. Vicky Jones, which is our administrator, our principal, and said that, uh, we could possibly go through the board. Um, however, at this point, why don't we start to see if we could just start an angle parking in a one-way to make the littlest amount of changes before we go big. And like we, like, uh, Tina was talking about, all the disadvantages that would happen. Uh, for example, the board, if we could possibly have money to make a parking, or to have a parking garage, um, a lot of money, a lot of time. Um, and even we also went through the route of, um, even taking, possibly taking half of the football, um, field. But, um, again, we're talking a lot of individuals, students and teachers that will, um, be very upset. So we thought the least amount affected people-wise would be possibly running a one-way street on St. Andrews and Rutherford, and allowing the buses to go on that road and hopefully put, I mean, sorry, angle parking. So we have reached out to administration.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Barbara, you had a question?
Uh, thank you, worship. I'm a little biased on this particular subject. Um, historically, the, uh, the buses used to load on, uh, St. Andrews and, uh, or they dropped on St. Andrews, and, um, they traditionally pick up on Rutherford. As you know, there's two waves of approximately twelve to thirteen buses, which is the entire population of the school that requires to be bused. Uh, back a few years ago, uh, the, uh, the buses stopped going on St. Andrews in order to allow for the extra parking that was created, the angle parking down at the bottom of St. Andrews towards south. Um, right now, as I said, the, uh, the buses very effectively and safely operate from Rutherford in, uh, in two waves. Takes about a half an hour, uh, fifteen minutes for the first, fifteen minutes for the second. Before and after that, except for visiting, uh, transportation, that isn't used by the buses. Um, if there was a solution, maybe the timeframe can be adjusted as an alternative. Some, it has been a problem for years, but the solution to it is challenging, as you've seen. Um, keep working on it. Maybe there's a solution out there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, I understand that the staff have been working on, uh, reviewing our parking policies, and I'd like to refer this to whichever staff is dealing with that, and, and kind of include that issue in, in, when they make a report to council. But Deputy Mayor Barbara is quite correct. Tina, this is a very challenging position. Uh, it's al- it's almost as challenging as, uh, cutting the football field in half, which would be super challenging. Or be, right. Anyway, thank you very much for your part. And I said, both you, both you and Nancy are the first students to present at Town Council, and thank you very much for, for coming here. All right. We have a resolution?
That the delegation from Tina Harder regarding the East Elgin, um, secondary school parking issues be received for information.
Mover and seconder, Deputy Mayor Barbara, Counselor Rahi, all those in favor? Just Carrie, thank you. Thank you. Adoption of council and committee minutes, we six point one, regular meeting of council of April the nineteenth, resolution?
That council approves the following minutes, regular meeting of council held on April the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Questions, comments, additions? Mover and seconder, Counselor Veneres and Counselor Ozlatch, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. East Elgin Community Complex minutes? And, uh, this is a separate resolution, you know, and, and the Elgin County Council minutes, right, together. Thank you.
That council receives the following minutes, meeting of East Elgin Community Complex held on April the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, and meeting of Elgin County Council held on April the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
Any comments or questions on either one of those minutes? Seeing none, mover and seconder, Counselor, or Deputy Mayor, uh, Deputy Mayor Barbara? Didn't forget your name, really, Deputy Mayor. Deputy Mayor Barbara and Counselor Chapman. All those in favor? It's Carrie, thank you. Consent agenda. Resolution?
That items seven point one to seven point six of the May third, two thousand and twenty-three consent agenda be received for information, and further, that council supports, uh, the staff recommendation to waive the Kinsman Pavilion rental fee.
Uh, mover and seconder, Counselor Veneres and Counselor Rahi. Comments from council? Questions? Just, Counselor Chapman?
Just, uh, through you, worship, just a quick comment on the waiver of the Kinsman Pavilion fee. I'm happy to see that the school wants to use our parks. So I very much agree that we should waive that.
Seeing no one else, all those in favor? Yes, Carrie, thank you. Item eight, action item. We have, uh, addition to the beginning of the action items. Uh, since the agenda was published, additional correspondence from Mike Hutchinson received and added to the public agenda. Um, my recommendations, we start, you start by receiving the correspondence for information. I guess we have a motion for that?
Certainly, yeah. So through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so the recommendation with that additional correspondence reads that council receives correspondence dated May the second, two thousand and twenty-three, from Mike Hutchinson regarding file OPA zero one twenty-three and ZBA zero one twenty-three. ZBA 0123 for information.
Mover and Secundar, moved by Councilor Veneres, seconded by Deputy Mayor Barbara. Is, is Mike Hutchinson here, by the way? If he's here, give him a chance to speak to this communication. Okay, don't, uh, questions and comments from council? Councilor De Rosier?
Thank you, your worship. It's too bad he's not here, doesn't have a representative, because I did have a question. But doing my own research on the 11 properties that he stated that were commercial vacancies in the downtown core, three of them are actually a commercial vacancy, that being Guns and Gadgets, uh, the Steen Building in East Link. The other remaining eight, I guess it is, um, they're either not available for rent per the owner of the property, they're holding on to it for personal reasons, or they just don't want to rent it. Or the one, for example, number three, is a vacant commercial lot. It's not really a, a commercial space that's available for rent, it's a vacant lot. So, um, looking at his list, I mean, I'm thankful that he provided this correspondence, this is good information to have, but I just wanted to note that really, out of the 11 properties that are listed, realistically, only three are vacancies that are available for commercial rent. Uh, the question I had for him or a representative would be, the property that he's owned at 230 John Street North, I believe he's owned it for about a year, um, and he's advised that there is no market for commercial, he's only had three prospective commercial renters come to him, would be, how in the year that he's owned the property has he advertised the space and marketed it for rent? I personally haven't seen a sign out saying it was available for rent. I haven't seen it on any Realtor, like Realtor.ca, or any type of real estate ads, or on social media, or any type of website. So my question to him, which he can't answer, would be, how was the unit advertised for rent and marketed the year, the year, however long he has had it?
All right, thank you for that comment.
Just to clarify, um, there, there was a request from Jacob who was involved with this project. He called me up today and asked if he should attend. The resolution that was passed at the last council said that we weren't going to reopen this for a public hearing, that we were just going to receive written comments, so, so I said that there wasn't really going to be another public hearing held on this, because that would have required us to give further public notice and reopen it under the Planning Act. So that, that's the reason why they, they aren't here, it isn't because the applicant or agent wasn't willing to attend or anything.
It was from direction, okay.
Yeah, well, thank you for that, Andy, I guess I was giving, I was giving some leeway to, to, to Mike Hutchinson and his agent, in case he did want to speak, but you're absolutely right, it's, uh, it really isn't an open meeting, but, so thanks for explaining that. Any other comments? Deputy Mayor Barbara?
Uh, thank you, worship. Planning matters such as this are very complicated and really, um, tax the, the process sometimes. In the respect that this particular application has pretty much ticked most of the boxes that, uh, zoning bylaw amendments and official plan amendments as far as the town goes, uh, and the, the planning policies that the province has, um, and it would be, it would be awkward for the, for the town to commence litigation against the town on a, on a planning matter that is supported by the planning staff. And, um, so bottom line is, if the, uh, if the bottom, if the end result of this is that the zoning bylaw and the official plan amendments are turned down, it's turned over to the Ontario Land Tribunal, uh, we have to defend our decision, and yet that decision has been supported internally by the town. So the town is litigating against the town, and it doesn't seem to be a, a reasonable challenge that, that you would want to take on. Yes, there is a loss of commercial space if this, uh, project goes ahead. As far as the employment loss goes, we didn't really lose any, any jobs. Those jobs moved to a relocated, uh, facility in a brand-new building, so they probably enhanced the employment levels. If the decision is ultimately to turn it down and it is withheld, should the town then become a landlord and take this on as a, as a housing project and get into the landlord market? Do we want to do that if, if just a residential development is, is not desired, if it has to have a commercial identity? We all agree the commercial would be great to have, but it may not be practical from a planning perspective. My thoughts?
Thank you for that. Councilor Rahi?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. What was the zoning when it was purchased for approximately a year ago? Was it commercial?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so it was commercial, the issue that was outlined, uh, kind of when we had the, the public meeting is that the zoning is both commercial and residential for the property, and commercial would usually be on the first floor. Because this is only a one-story building, um, it has to be either or, it can't be or, or it could be amended, but normally the main floor would be commercial, second floor or third floor would all be residential. So that's the kind of zoning that was in existence.
Is that for the property, or is that for that building?
The zoning's on the property.
On the property, okay. But it was bought knowing that that building was potentially commercial?
But also residential.
Okay.
Uh, actually, we're discussing things that are not part of this communication, but that's fine, because we'll be dealing with these things later as well, so I'll take one more comment from Councilor Chapman.
Oh, my, through you, worship, my comment is, um, we lost several commercial spaces when we had our fire, and this particular building is within the BIA zone area, and there are other businesses very close to it. And once you give up a commercial property, chances of it returning to commercial are quite slim. And yes, we need housing, but we also lack commercial space. And you said we didn't lose jobs. The jobs that were there, they did move, but we would be losing the potential for more jobs. And more jobs is always, so that's why I made the proposal of, you said that it was, could be upper and lower, we suggested that the front half could be commercial and the back would, and then you solved two problems. So, yes, I agree that it would go to the tribunal and that we would be going against the recommendation of our planning committee, but sometimes it's worth fighting for when you believe in something, and I believe that losing the commercial space is not a benefit to the community. So I'm going to ask that we defer this decision so that we can think about it a little bit more, so that, um, we can, I don't know, have a conversation with Mr. Hutchinson or something.
The resolution on the floor is acceptance of this, uh, this communication from, uh, Mike Hutchinson. Any, I, I think all of the comments have finished concerning that, so I'm going to call the question on, uh, the, what's the actual resolution, so people know what they're voting on, and you repeat it again?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, this is moved by Councilor Van Reyes and seconded by Deputy Mayor Barbara, and it reads that council receives correspondence dated May the 2nd, 2023, from Mike Hutchinson regarding file OPA 0123 and ZBA 0123 for information.
So we're voting to, you know, receive the, of course, you know, the communication. Uh, we already have a mover and Secundar, so all those in favor? And then it's carried, thank you. The next item on the agenda is eight point one, which is a notice of motion, a motion to reconsider resolution 10723 and 10623, resolution?
Uh, through Mr. Mayor, uh, just keeping in, in line with the procedure, this was previously put on the table by Councilor Oslatch via notice of motion at a previous meeting, and, uh, so it's moved by Councilor Oslatch, and the motion reads that council reconsider the vote on resolution number 10723 and resolution number 10623, refusing applications OPA 0123 and ZBA 0123 for lands legally described as Lot 6 and part of Lot 7, John Street North, Walnut Plan 163, and municipally known as 230 John Street North.
Thank you. It's already been moved by Councilor Oslatch. We have a Secundar? Secundar with Councilor Veneres? Discussion? Deputy Mayor Barbara?
Your worship, is it appropriate to ask, Andy, for clarification on exactly, uh, the ramifications of either for or against this particular motion?
Sure. Through you, so I, I believe what's before council right now is whether or not to reopen the previous decision, so it's reconsideration and, and whether or not to discuss it. So that, that's the motion that's before you now, and then if, if, perhaps if council votes on whether or not they want to reopen this issue, then we can, can have, I can answer that question with the next motion, which would be the, the consideration of the previous matters on it. Because right now, this issue is still closed. If that makes sense to council, right now, we aren't actually discussing this, any change until the council, a majority of council votes to actually have that discussion.
So this, this motion is just asking to vote again on the original motion?
Which is the ZBA and OPA?
That's the one we defeated. Get a chance to vote on that one again if this reconsideration passes.
It can be confusing.
If the, if the reconsideration doesn't pass, then we're done, basically.
Yeah, then ask the same question, if you want.
Question, Councilor Oslatch?
Yes, your worship. I'm in the middle of this, uh, con, you know. I have a hard time making my decision over the last couple of weeks, and I'm voting my conscience tonight. I, uh, yesterday, I voted to think for deferral of this motion, to the, let the applicant come back and with a further, further proposal. But this morning, reading his letter, I like the motion to stand.
I believe you're talking about something other than this particular resolution, all right? But this resolution simply is saying that we are going to reconsider.
I said, uh, wrong terminology. This relation, resolution shall stand.
I don't know what you're, which resolution shall stand, you're talking about reconsideration?
Reconsideration.
Well, okay, you can do that by voting for it, right? Okay. Now I understand what you're saying, sorry. Any other comments on that? All right. I repeat, this resolution simply asks us if we pass it to reconsider the original motion, we get a chance to vote on it again. All right. It's reconsider. Yes.
Does that reconsider tonight, or?
Yes, tonight. The next, the next motion will be.
Yes. It's, it's confusing.
Well, it doesn't happen often that we go through this, but, you know, if this passes, our next motion will be looking at the original motion again. All right. Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And it is carried. So next motion is dealing, follows the instructions actually given in the reconsider motion, that we reconsider resolution 10723, is that correct? Read out the motion.
Great, so through you, uh, Mr. Mayor, and just as a point of clarification, so we, based on that notice of motion that, um, for reconsideration that we just endorsed, uh, will be reconsidering both the resolutions number 10623 and 10723. So just based on the, the chronology of that, we'll start with the resolution number 10623, and that reads, uh, that council of the town of Elmer receive report Plan 1323 regarding planning evaluation report, applications for official plan amendment OPA 0123, and Z, zoning bylaw amendment application ZBA 0123 respecting property known municipally as 230 John Street North, and that council of the town of Elmer adopt the proposed official plan amendment application OPA 0123 in accordance with bylaw number 2023, and forward the necessary documentation and bylaw to the county of Elgin for approval, and, and that council of the town of Elmer approves the proposed zoning bylaw amendment application ZBA 0123 in accordance with bylaw number 2123, and considers providing three readings to the bylaw number 2123.
And just to clarify, that was the original motion back on April the 5th, all right? Mover and a Secundar, put it on the table, and moved by Deputy Mayor Barbara, seconded by Councilor Oslatch. Council. Comments? Perhaps you've already had enough, anyway, Councilor.
I'm a little confused, but.
Clear as mud.
What, uh, what if, what if I was looking for a different option than the only one that they have presented? How does that work? I guess, is what I'm asking. So like, if there was a potential for them to actually consider putting commercial in one part, residential in the other part, did they have to come back with a whole nother?
So you're basically asking to present an amendment that, yeah, keeping with the original motion, kind of? Clarify that?
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so, uh, the easiest way I always explain reconsideration now is that we just went back in a time machine and we're 30 seconds before the vote on May, May, uh, April 5th here. So that's where we are right now. If you wanted to propose an amendment, the applicant has, um, certainly that was, we were considering, uh, the council member was considering deferring this to get information. I think the letter, uh, from, uh, Mike Hutchinson i- is fairly clear that he isn't, doesn't intend to amend the, the application, uh, and he has a right to not amend the application, and that's kind of what's before council a- at this time, is that we, we've advanced it, and, uh, certainly before council now, if you defer this, the original application was received in, uh, February by the town, um, so essentially you would be deferring it not for further information at this point, you'd just be deferring it to not make a decision which would give him the right to appeal to LPAD after 90 days from when the application was substantially completed to the town. So that timeframe is coming up quickly regardless, um, to uphold the, the decision of council before, which was to vote down this motion, which resulted in the refusal, would have the same effect in that they could, uh, also file, uh, an appeal to the tribunal as well. So that's kind of the position that council i- is in, if, if there isn't much option further to, to defer this or, or to, um, deal with it, so it's, it's essentially, you're in a position now to, to deal with the application that is, was presented on April 5th.
Okay, I was hoping that it would at least give him, or put him in a position that he could come back with another plan that he doesn't want.
Yeah, I think, I think Councilor Rahi, that, um, if, if we're asking for a deferral or an amendment of that kind of thing, I think, as Andy has already said, he's already done that. I don't, he's not going to change, right? I, I, let's look at a kind of a reality check here, I understand the feelings of people that we want the commercial space and we need the, uh, living space for apartments, but what we have here is, is a developer who has lived in the town of Elmer forever. He is a great citizen of the town, uh, he's put forward, I, I think, an application that is sound and certainly approved by, uh, you know, staff here. I, I think, I think, you know, it's, uh, we either accept it or we don't, and I think we should accept it because, uh, it's a sound application, and, uh, understanding how people feel about commercial space. space, I think that we need, we need the space that he's offering. So anyway, any other comments? Counselor Oslach.
Your worship, he's going to spend $1.5 million on the development on this John Street North, and he's going to, as he indicated in his letter, he's going to all local tradesmen, and that will provide a lot of jobs and development charges for the town of Elmer. So I think this is a good idea. I, over the last couple of weeks, I have tried and turmoil with my decision, and after reading his letter, like I read it further this morning, I am in favor of the apartments.
Okay, do I need to read the motion? The motion is the same one we've been looking at twice now, so I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion? Opposed? It's four to three, it's carried. All right, item 8.2, I believe. Oh, did I? Okay, oh yeah, we do have, we have to clear up some housekeeping, and that is, the last time, on April the 5th, when we denied this, we also passed a motion giving a reason for denial. Now that we haven't denied it, we have to wipe out that particular resolution, right? There's a resolution, so read the resolution we're looking at.
That Resolution 10723 is carried on April 5th, 2023, and deleted in its entirety.
Anyone want, do we have a copy of that resolution, just so they know what we're actually voting on, because people would like to know that, I think, so I'll give them a second to look at that.
Certainly, through you, Mr. Mayor, I'll read it out just for the, for information. So this was, again, this was approved at the April 5th, 2023, regular meeting, and we would be deleting this motion that reads that the council of the corporation of the town of Elmer hereby refuses applications OPA 0123 and ZB A 0123 for lands legally described as Lot 6 and part of Lot 7 on the west side of John Street and the north side of Walnut Plan 163 and municipally known as 230 John Street North, as the applications in the opinion of council are not consistent with the provincial policy statement, specifically Policy 1.3, respecting employment.
And there are valid reasons for passing that on April the 5th, but now there are no reasons for keeping that particular resolution on the books since we have approved the application. Any questions on that? Okay, good. Mover in a second, Counselor Van Reyes and Deputy Mayor Barber. All those in favor? It's carried. Thank you. So 8.2, Chief Administrator Rob, population study, and.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So very briefly, I just wanted to give counsel a bit of an update that our population study, we are slightly delaying bringing it forward to counsel, and that's to include the potential impacts of the new Volkswagen announcement on growth in that, so we hope to have that before you in September. Overall, this is great news to have, you know, the biggest factory ever in Canada, 12 minutes down the road is only going to mean good things for Elmer, but we want to make sure that we include this in our proposal. One of the aspects of this that's important to, for counsel, is that it used to be that we could only plan on a 25-year projection. The province has opened that up to allow for 50 years of projection for planning, so that does give us some additional ability to, prior to beginning to discuss this with Malahide about how much additional land we'll need. We do know that there is residential and industrial land shortages that are going to be projected, so this will lead directly to annexation or boundary adjustments with the township of Malahide. So just to kind of give you initial timeframe that we'll start having those discussions this fall.
Okay, thank you. Did we have a resolution for that? I don't think I gave that, asked for it, did I, at the beginning?
That report CAO 3023, respecting a population study update, be received for information.
Mover in a second, Counselor Chapman, Counselor Van Reyes. All those in favor? It's carried, thank you. 8.3, I have the Director of Operations, the Amber Request for Improvements, resolution first.
That report, Operations 1423, entitled Elmer Minor Baseball Association Request for Improvements Optimist Ball Diamond Pitching Mound, be received for information, in that council grants permission to the Elmer Minor Ball Association to install an elevated pitching mound on Optimist Ball Diamond as outlined in the report.
Mover in a second, move by Counselor Disrosia, seconded by Counselor Chapman. Counsel? Oh, sir, give me the report first, Rob.
Thank you, your worship. As has been stated, the purpose of this report is to present a request from the Elmer Minor Ball Association for permission to install a pitching mound at Optimist Park, Ball Diamond. As the council is aware, we're working through a request there to make improvements at the Optimist Park, but the Elmer Minor Ball Association would like to advance the pitching mound before we look at those other improvements. They're suggesting that the pitching mound would be installed and maintained and funded by the Elmer Minor Ball Association, so staff are bringing forth this report, request to council tonight. I am very limited experience with the actual intricacies of the pitching mound, but I'll try to answer any questions I get.
Counselor Rahi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was some talk about changing that surface to maybe a clay surface, like what's in Springfield. If that mound goes in, does that have to be removed in order to do surface, if that is a potential, what could happen, I guess?
Through you, your worship, we had, this pitching mound has had a lot of discussions back and forth with Elmer Minor Ball, including discussions around a temporary pitching mound. Elmer Minor Ball is suggesting that even if future improvements were to take place, that replacing this, removing and replacing this mound is still, would be more cost-effective to them. Yes?
Thank you. I'm not very good at baseball, so I don't know anything about it, but I would hate to see something get put in just to get taken out in the, you know, the near future, potentially, so, thanks.
Thank you for that comment. Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, your worship. To Rob, if I may. A mound is certainly advantageous in baseball, or hardball. Have the other users of the park, be it slow pitch or fastball, indicated their approval or acceptance of a mound?
Through you, your worship, we have reached out to the other user groups to discuss all of the improvements at, the potential improvements at Optimist Park. We have not heard back from any of them, and that would be a couple of months ago. I also think that this would probably be an opportunity to maybe trial this mound at really no risk to the town, to see if we do have any issues surrounding the mound with the other users. But to answer your question, Deputy Mayor Barber, no, we have not heard back, and we have solicited input. So they haven't provided the opportunity.
Just a follow-up, if I may. Pitching fastball from a baseball mound is different, and I hope it wouldn't put the teams at a disadvantage, having to pitch from a mound as compared to on the level if they go to another park. Just a thought.
All right. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's carried. 8.4, the Manager of Operations, concerning the DWQMS, we have a resolution.
That report, Operations 1523, entitled DWQMS Operational Plan Council Endorsement, be received for information, that council endorses the town's DWQMS operational plan for the town's water distribution system as submitted on May the 3rd, 2023.
Mover in a second, Counselor Oslach, Counselor Rahi. Connor.
Thank you, your worship. So the purpose of this report is to provide counsel the opportunity to endorse the town of Elmer's QMS operational plan. Council's completed their standard of care training that was provided through the primary water board already, and you might recall them speaking to the DWQMS 21 elements. So through a resolution tonight, you will be satisfying element three, which is a requirement, commitment, and endorsement of our operational plan.
Counsel? Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's carried, thank you. 8.5, Director of. Oh, we have a resolution.
That report, Fire 623, entitled Elmer Fire Department Recent Activity Apparatus and Staff Report, be received.
Fire chief.
Oh, thank you, your worship. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I was late. Good evening, counsel. So as promised earlier, we'd take a report from the manager, or director of emergency service, a little deeper dive into our operations, any obstacles and challenges, and they're all listed in the, in my report that, that's in front of you. Unfortunately, some of these circumstances can't be budgeted for. That comes with the territory. More so, I'd like to bring counsel's attention to under fire apparatus of our aging ladder truck. Usually, I wouldn't bring this in front of counsel till the year it was due, much like our last pumper truck. It's just the expense of this apparatus is something that I honestly feel we should start thinking about. Aerial trucks are in the neighborhood of $2 million now, and I would really like to start designing a roadway, a roadmap, if you will, of how we can reach that goal when it becomes due for replacement in 2028. So I just wanted to make counsel aware of that, that that is something coming up in the near future, and we did manage to save some, some money on our, on our pumper by, by moving a little quicker than usual, around $100,000, as you see my report. It was actually a little bit more than that. So it gives us an opportunity to explore some avenues, trade-in, used, stock trucks, and come up with a plan, which is the best investment for the town, as we all are aware, as we're growing. The truck does follow the path of, of the rest of our equipment on a 25-year replacement plan. Usually, you don't take aerials that long, but ours is in very good condition, and still worth a very good dollar trade-in, from what I understand, of probably over a couple hundred thousand dollars. So whether we act later or sooner, that's a decision for counsel. The last point I'd like to make on this report is, is the very last paragraph in my report, a real-life test, and some of the council has heard me say this before, but a real-life, a real-life test of training equipment and fire apparatus unfortunately happens sometimes when it, when it all gets tested, which of course, we, we've seen in our last month of activities with the fire department. When the three items come together and proves to be successful, as we've seen in our fires, it's, it's a pat in the back to everybody involved, including counsel. So I'd like to thank past counsel for their support, and the present counsel for providing Elmer Fire with the equipment and the training to do the job of which they do. And with that, your worship, any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. I need a mover and a second to put it on the table, I didn't ask for that. Counselor Van Reyes and Counselor Rahi. Counsel, questions? Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, your worship, to the chief. When the present aerial was purchased a few years ago, it was a used piece of apparatus. At that particular time, it was a very fiscally responsible purchase, being a used item. Would that be feasible, moving forward?
Through you.
Have you looked at?
Through you, your worship, absolutely. What I would like to do is sit down with finance and, and the management team at the fire department, come up with some, some alternative to present to counsel. I will caution you, that truck was bought in 2016 with half of its expected life already spent. So I don't want to see counsel get in a position where you pay me now or pay me later, you know what I mean? We will definitely include that in our report to counsel and let it be a decision by, by counsel, but absolutely, we will explore used equipment. I would say not half its life, but we will definitely look at the options of, of used equipment, demonstrated equipment, stock trucks, which means it's sitting somewhere in somebody's factory. We don't get to do a lot of changes, but as long as it fulfills the need from our growing community, and that's, that's the other thing we need to look at, do we take the step and get something that's going to last here for 30 years? So we have that opportunity as well at that time. Good question, thank you.
A follow-up, if I may, your worship, would it follow along the same lines as the present piece of equipment, or would there be any design?
I would like to sit down with our finance and of course, decide, decide where we can use, if we can use development charges towards an apparatus like that. I know we have before. Our, our director of finance has a better understanding of that, of what's available. I would suggest a truck that has more reach. We were in your neighborhood doing some training, and we have some big buildings over there, and some, sometimes we can't get in the parking lot, so we have to reach from the road. I would definitely look at a truck with perhaps a little, a little bit longer of a stretch, perhaps 100 feet or slightly over. We did notice at the Innovation Center, we were a little short on length as well.
That's why I live on the ground floor.
That's, that's right. Thank you.
Counselor Ben Ray.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just more of a comment. Obviously saw the night of the fire, the importance of a ladder truck with multiple ladder trucks on scene, and having our downtown core and multiple buildings with, that are multi-level. I definitely see the importance of having a ladder truck that is not going to fail in the time of need, and it's nice having that here, and then not relying on neighboring municipalities unless we have something like what happened, so I see the importance in that.
Yes. Through you, your worship, thank you, good, good point. Of course, your fire experience, as well as our deputy mayor's, is very valuable here, and it's the aerial trucks that save downtown fires, it truly is. We are fortunate enough to have that at our disposal, and time is, time is everything in a situation like that, and with our industrial and the growth, it's, it's time to start thinking about the future of that truck, so thank you.
Good, thank you for those comments. Seeing no one else, all those in favor of the motion? It's carried, thank you. Next one is 8.6, from Chief McCoon, again, we have a resolution.
That report, Fire 723, entitled Elmer Fire Department Schedule F Fee Adjustments to Establish Fees and Charges Bylaw 6821, be received for information, and that council directs staff to prepare an amendment to the user fee bylaw to adopt the revised Schedule F as attached to this report.
Mover in a second, Counselor Oslach, Counselor Disrosia, Chief McCoon.
Thank you, your worship. Before you counsel, is, one, one item we did learn with finances, we did have some expenses through this fire that maybe we weren't able to charge back on. So staff did a full review of our service charges, it's in front of you. We brought everything in line with most of our neighboring municipalities, so I tried to include the increase and put us right in target with the, with the rest of our neighbors. I will draw your attention to Schedule F, Fee for Extraordinary Services, if we can get that up. That allows us, your worship, the, the opportunity to, to charge for anything required to firefighting, fire investigation, security, public safety overhaul operations, or any reasonable operation or services deemed necessary by the Elmer Fire Department. What that means is if we need to bring heavy equipment in, we don't necessarily need approvals, we can do that as it's deemed necessary by the fire chief official to extinguish the fire or continue the, the safety of the community. That's nothing new. Fire departments I've worked with in the past, this is pretty standard. It covers our expenses on such things as, if we carry on through firefighting foam, it's $200 a bucket, we probably used five buckets up there. So it gives the fire department the ability to charge, charge those items back. I use the term extraordinarily. I use the term extraordinarily over expenses. It does not charge the citizens for firefighting, for us showing up. It allows us to charge their insurance companies for the extras that we need. A citizen, a resident of Elmer will not see an increase for fire service at all. You will notice, I'll bring your attention to, if council approves this, you will see under auto accident, car fires, non-residents, that's nothing new, that fire departments would charge somebody from Toronto if they were in the Town of Elmer, got in an accident. It's done on the King, or the Queen's highways every day. On the 401, if you get in an accident, it gets charged to the government. So unfortunately, we don't have a highway going through Elmer that we can charge back on, but we can charge non-residents the fee for a service if council so chooses to recover some of your expenses of, of the trucks running. And with that, your worship, I'm, I'm here to take any questions.
Right, counsel? Seeing no questions or comments, all those in favor, is carried, thank you. Item eight point seven, the Associate Director of Infrastructure and Operations concerning the Water Tower Access Road Resolution.
That report, operations ten twenty-three, entitled Quotation Award Water Tower Access Road, be received for information, and that council provides an exemption to the Town of Elmer procurement policy to accept the quotation submitted by PVX Construction Limited in the amount of $136,213 excluding HST to expedite the work upon the Water Tower Access Road.
Reverend Sekunder, Counselor Chapman, Counselor Van Rys. Terry.
Thank you, worship. I'll try to keep it brief. This report relates to the necessary access road for the Water Tower project, which is currently out for tender. The Water Tower project is a critical project for the town and has the potential to commence earlier than anticipated. It's stipulated in the tender that an access road will be provided to the site. So if we could just zoom in on, just so I can explain the site a bit better on the figure provided. So this drawing is for the future industrial park, the AIM Park. The blue highlighted is the Water Tower site. The red is where an access road would be provided to the Water Tower site. As you can see, it's also in the same location as the future industrial road. So rather than build a temporary access road to be removed at a later date, we would like to build the road to the permanent design now. So I utilized the industrial park roadway design to issue a quotation for the works. Due to time constraints, we were unable to issue a request for tender on bids and tenders. We received three quotations from large civil contractors and received very favorable pricing. This strategy will save the town substantial costs by not completing the roadworks twice, not paying overhead and profit through the Water Tower project, and by keeping the project in-house, will save consultant fees. This strategy will also help with future site separation issues to keep the accesses separate, because the Water Tower has a potential to be a multi-year project or extend into 2024. This will provide a dedicated access for that project while the future AIM Park could access through White Street from the north and work to the south, keeping the two projects separate. So for these reasons, staff recommend to proceed with the works, and I can answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you for that report. Excuse me. Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, worship. How far is the construction of the road going to go as far as completion goes? Is it just to the gravel stage? You're not paving at this, this point, are you?
Yes, through your worship, it would be full excavation to the proper design grades and to the proper road width, placement of granular B and a, a skiff of granular A, I'll call it, so not even full-depth granular A. So it would be essentially ready for curb placement. So no, no asphalt at this time, just, just the correct.
So you're excavating and then using heavy equipment traffic to help pack it down?
Well, it will be properly packed down, so there, there's a geotechnical firm involved, so they'll, they'll be doing the required testing for granular sieve analysis and then compaction testing. So it will all be constructed as it would be for a full roadway project in lieu of a, a temporary access road.
Thank you.
Counselor Chapman.
Through you, your worship, just a, a comment. It's nice to see that you're thinking forward and trying to save us money in the long run, and I think it's a good choice to do it this way, so.
Thank you for that comment. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor, is carried, thank you. Item nine, new business in matters of urgency, there is none. Reading of bylaws and proceedings thereon, I, I believe we have added, there would be an addition to the bylaws concerning the, the reconsideration vote.
All right, through you, Mr. Mayor. So the resolution reads that council considers giving three readings to and approving the bylaw 2023, being a bylaw to adopt amendment number 22 to the official plan for the incorporation of the Town of Elmer, respecting 230 John Street North, bylaw 2123, being a bylaw to amend the bylaw number 5799, being the zoning bylaw of the Town of Elmer, respecting 230 John Street North, bylaw 3123, being a bylaw to amend bylaw 3822, which is a bylaw to make the necessary council and citizen appointments to committees and boards, and this is respecting the Parks and Beautification Advisory Committee, bylaw 3223, being a bylaw to amend the bylaw 3419, as amended, respecting the incorporation of the Town of Elmer's policies and procedures for the procurement of goods and services. So that's our procurement bylaw. And then we've got bylaw, my apologies, 3323, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at the regular council meeting held on April the 19th, 2023.
Is that all?
Yes.
Have a mover and a seconder, Counselor Van Rys and Counselor Rahi. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, and is carried, thank you. Number 11, inquiries by members, or inquiries by members. Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, worship. The Town of Elmer has a very comprehensive road construction priority list. At the present time, that particular list does not have any, near the top, any smaller projects that would be dependent on funding that came with short notice. We don't have any projects that would qualify. Elk Street is by far the, the largest project, and it's obviously still number one, but if the province came through with some money and we could advance something this farther down the list, it seems to, to make sense. So my question is to, to Rob, if I may, would it be prudent to prepare such a document?
Through you, your worship, to Deputy Mayor Barber, those are some of the things that Terry is looking at right now through the lens of the asset management. Is there other smaller projects that would qualify, that we could get ready to be ready for a funding or, or something on the books and ready to go? I know that asset management is a fairly significant undertaking, so I, I think we're hopeful that we can have something ready for, for budget in the near future. You're, you're 100% right, that Elk Street is a large project, it's sitting there, there might be an opportunity that we go off and do some pre-engineering on another smaller project, that if that opportunity presents itself, we could leverage that and offer that up in advance of the Elk Street project. If, I believe if that's Deputy Mayor's question.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Second question to, may I, worship, to Rob, the micro resurfacing that was done last year, how did it weather over the winter? Has it met expectations?
Through you, worship, to Deputy Mayor Barber, yes, I would say that's performing really well. I'm happy with that, that surface. I think micro-surface in the town, the longevity, I think we're going to be happy with it. We're not hitting it with, you know, big highway plows and, and marking it, marking it off. It, for those new members of council, micro-surface is one tool in our asphalt toolbox. We're, we really like to, you know, sort of waterproof that surface and do some crack sealing and prevent water from getting in to the base. We don't want to see the asphalt alligator crack, so that is sort of a pavement preservation technique that we've been using. It's like water, once water gets through the roof, it causes a lot more for your pavement structure down below. So that's the purpose of the micro-sealing, is to kind of stretch that longevity of the road system. I will also say it's really a precursor to a future shave and pave program. Like really, that's where the Town of Elmer should be, is milling those roads and redoing that top lift of asphalt. The underground goes 50 years, the asphalt goes 25, so you want to get it shaved and paved and, and everything kind of lined up. The difficulty is, a shave and pave program for the town is probably like a half a million dollars. Our, our budget on that micro-surface is like $140,000. So if we were to immediately go to shave and pave, while we were doing those one block or a block and a half of, of shave and pave, the other roads are falling into the need bucket as fast as we're, we're falling behind, basically. So if we can get around on our micro-surface, give the council some time to get that program fully funded, council has some heavy lifting to do to get to that shave and pave program. Again, those all through Terry's asset management plan. That's kind of the pavement preservation in a nutshell, if you will. But I would say that what we're using now to preserve those roads at micro-surf is, is performing well.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions? So, so any other statements or, or inquiries, I guess, right, inquiries by members, aren't we? Right, there are 12 statements in committee reports. I have none there. Report of the mayor, I had a long list of what I, I kind of did in April, but I think I'll save it for May, since we're running late tonight, and I will have no report. Notice of motions, there is none. Meeting close to the public.
That council moves into a meeting close to the public at 8:56 PM to discuss the following matter, and this is report clerk 3123, confidential update respecting Elgin Innovation Center legal update, and this item's closed, close to the public pursuant to section 239-2E of the municipal act, as amended as a subject matter pertains to litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local.
Thank you. Mover and seconder, Counselor Chapman and Counselor Van Rys. All those in favor, carried, we'll take a brief recess.